Gibson.
Here.
Greenfield.
Here.
Gordenchik. Johnson. Kalos. King. Koo.
Present.
Kozlowitz. Lansman. Lansman. Lander. Levin.
Here.
Levine. Mizel.
Present.
Cabrera. Mealy. Please silence your phones. Thank you. Menchaca.
Presente.
Mendez. Miller. Miller.
Present.
Palma. Perkins.
Presente.
Reynoso. Richards.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rose. Carnegie. Rosenthal. Salamanca.
Present.
Torres. Trager.
Here.
Ulrich. Vaca.
Here.
Valone.
Here.
Williams. Wills. Mario. Ben Bremer.
Here.
Speaker Mark Viverito. Quiet in the chambers, please. All rise for the invocation. The invocation will be delivered by Reverend Janelle C. Doris, the pastor of Full Gospel Assembly of Queens in Richmond Hill. Quiet in the chamber.
Let us pray. Our gracious and loving heavenly Father, we thank you today for all daily blessings you have bestowed on us. We thank you for your eternal grace and mercies that are new every morning. Our hearts exclaim, great is thy faithfulness. We thank you for the health and strength you have granted us to fulfill our purpose and call and to serve this great city. Scripture reminds us to pray for those in authority who govern our city, that they will seek justice, love mercy, and walk humbly before you. So today we pray for our city leaders, our mayor, our public advocate, our comptroller, particularly our city council speaker Melissa Mark Viverito, and members of the city council, that you will continue to grant them the compassion for the least of these and those in need in our city. Grant them the clarity of vision for our city, the wisdom to govern these trying and difficult times, the ability and fortitude and the indomitable will to make the right and necessary decisions, and to walk in unity and work in unity togetherness for the good of our city. Bless their individual families and loved ones and communities they serve. I pray for today's proceedings and the agenda before them today. Please guide them in all truth, prudence, and wisdom as they work on behalf of all those visit and who call our great city home. In your most righteous and blessed name I pray. Amen. And amen.
Please be seated. A motion to spread the invocation, Councilmember Kozlowitz. Quiet in the chambers, please.
Thank you, and I welcome the pastor, who's a pastor in my district, and I make a motion to spread the invocation upon the city council.
Thank you. Adoption of minutes, Councilmember Chin.
Motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of April 5th, 2017, be as stoppeded as printed. Thank you.
Thank you. Quiet in the chambers, please. Messages and papers from the mayor.
Excuse me. M. 498 through M. 506 on page 2, expense, capital, and CD budgets and supporting schedules.
Finance.
M. 507, debt and reserves.
Received order printed and filed. Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
None.
Petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
M. 508 through M. 511, sidewalk cafes.
Coupled on a call-up vote and ask for a roll-call vote?
May we have quiet in the chambers, please, for a roll-call vote? Please. Please take your conversations outside and please find a seat. Roll-call.
Barron. Borelli. Cabrera.
Permission to vote on all items in resolution to this calendar?
Yes, councilmember.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Chin.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
Konstantinidis.
Aye.
Carnegie. Crowley. Combo. Deusch. Drum.
May I vote on all items on the calendar today?
Yes.
I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Espinal. Eugene.
Aye.
Grodnik.
Aye.
Gentili.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Greenfield.
Greenfield.
Victoria Wyndham, voting for Greenfield.
Councilmember Greenfield, you have to, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Gordenchik.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kalos. King. Koo.
Aye.
Kozlowitz.
Aye, and I ask permission to vote on all general couple orders?
Yes.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
Kalos.
Aye.
Lansman.
I would like to vote aye on all call-ups and with permission, I'd like to vote aye on all couple general orders and resolutions.
Yes.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
Lander.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Thank you, joint aye.
Levine.
Vote aye, and with the public advocate's permission, would like to vote aye on all call-ups, couple general orders, and resolutions.
Yes. Please silence your phones. And the band. Thank you.
Mizel.
I would like to vote aye on all call-ups and with permission, I'd like to vote on all coupled items on the general order calendar and all resolutions.
Yes, councilmember.
Thank you.
Mealy. Menchaca. Mendez.
Thank you.
Miller.
Affirmative.
Palma. Perkins.
Aye.
Reynoso. Combo.
Present.
Aye.
Aye.
Richards.
Aye.
Rodriguez. Rose. Rosenthal.
Councilmember, your microphone is not on.
Good catch.
Thank you.
With permission, in case I have to step out, I'd like to vote aye on all call-ups, and with permission, I'd like to vote on all coupled items on the general order calendar and all resolutions. I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Salamanca.
I would like to vote aye on all call-ups, and with permission, I would like to vote on all call-up general orders and resolutions.
Yes.
Vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Torres.
Aye on all.
Trager.
Aye.
Ulrich. Vaca.
I vote aye, and I'd like permission to vote aye on all general call-up items and general calendar.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Valone.
Aye.
Williams.
Councilmember Valone, you've got to verbally express.
Aye.
Thank you.
Williams.
Williams.
Aye.
Thank you.
Wills. Mario. Ben Bremer.
Aye.
Speaker Mark Viverito.
Thank you. Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, zero negative. May we have quiet in the chambers, please? Quiet in the chambers as we now hear from the speaker, Melissa Mark Viverito.
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate, and good afternoon. When I started this, two of my colleagues. You might notice some new faces around the chambers today. As part of National Foster Care Month, some members of the council are participating in Foster Youth Shadow Day. In our roles as elected officials, we are committed to doing everything in our power to help city youth navigate the foster care system and transition out into healthy and thriving lives as contributing members of the community. Whether through securing affordable housing, pursuing higher education, or seeking training and job experience, it is our goal to provide these young people with all of the opportunities possible. I want you all to say hello to Ashley, who is sitting here with me today, and I know to all the wonderful young people around the chambers. We welcome you with open arms very much. This is your home. We always say that New York City Hall and city chambers is the people's house, so this is your house. And I want to thank, obviously, if you can join, please join me in thanking Councilmember Levin for spearheading this effort to make this day a reality and bringing it here to the chambers. Thank you, councilmember. So, again, you'll be hearing a lot of work that we're doing today, a lot of bills that we're passing today, which means that they will be signed into law. And it's a pretty wonderful job that we have here and great to represent each and every one of you. On a more serious note, I want to, you know, just acknowledge before we begin, I know he isn't with us here today, but our city clerk, Michael McSweeney, unfortunately lost his mother this past week. We are, you know, grateful to him for all he does along here with us on behalf of the city, and we definitely extend our deepest condolences to him and his family during this difficult time. So, beginning our docket for the day, the council will be voting on appointments to four city commissions and boards. This will include two communications from the mayor submitting Carlos Silvestri for appointment as a member of the New York City Tax Commission, submitting Jabra Scott for appointment as a member of the New York City Environmental Control Board. The council will also vote on recommendation from the Brooklyn Borough President submitting Joseph Duick for reappointment to the New York City Planning Commission, and on our own designation of Robert Nolan for reappointment to the Health and Hospitals Corporations Board of Directors. And next, we will also be voting on landmark status for the interior of the Waldorf Astoria Hotel and for two buildings on the stretch of Montague Street in Brooklyn known as Bank Row. Councilmembers Grodnik and Levin represent the district's housing, these respective potential landmarks. I invite each of them to just say a few words, and we'll start off with Councilmember Grodnik.
Thank you very, very much, Madam Speaker. I am very pleased that the council is voting today on the designation of several interior spaces at the Waldorf Astoria Hotel. The Waldorf is one of our city's great architectural jewels and was appropriately designated an individual landmark in 1993. However, the fate of the interior of the hotel was kept uncertain for far too long. It's why I proudly offered my support to granting landmark designation to the hotel's breathtaking and worthy interior spaces. The interiors include such beautiful spaces as the main lobby, the grand ballroom, the silver gallery, the jade room, ass room, and others, each of which presents unique characteristics and is well-deserving of preservation. On view there are unique and historic murals, mosaics, and reliefs, along with distinctive period elevators, doors, paneling, and other finishes. I commend the recognition of the Waldorf Astoria for its phenomenal and lavish Art Deco style interior public spaces, and I look forward to approving this designation today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Levin?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'm very happy that the council today is voting on these two items on Montague Street in Brooklyn Heights for landmark designation. They represent some very important parts of the historic fabric of Brooklyn Heights. One building has a neoclassical, um, architecture, and the other building are Deco architecture that really established a sense of place along Montague Street, as was once Bank Row. These two designations will go even further towards completing the first landmark district in the city of New York. In 1965, the Brooklyn Heights Historic District was designated. These two buildings were left out of that designation, so we are going back and correcting a historical wrong in doing this today. And I want to thank the Brooklyn Heights Association, in particular Otis and Nancy Pierceall, and Peter Bray for their advocacy, as well as the Landmarks Commission for taking up this item, and you, Madam Speaker, and my colleagues for voting in favor of this landmark designation. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. On legislative items, the council will vote on multiple items regarding residential and hotel building conversions. Intro 1586, sponsored by Councilmember Richie Torres, would extend by two would extend by two years the limitations placed on the conversion of certain hotel space for purposes other than use as a hotel. The bill would also require the preparation of a supplementary hotel industry report that analyzes the impact of the industry on the economy of the city, with specific attention toward analyzing and addressing any impacts hotel conversions have on the availability of quality jobs for city residents. For staff, I want to thank Malak Nazar- Nasser Redeen, Megan Chen, Guillermo Patino, Jose Conde, Sarah Gastelum, Jen Wilcox, Wes Jones, and Ed Atkins, and we'll ask Councilmember Torres to say a few words about his bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The middle class, much like the American dream itself, has become an endangered species. Poverty is more widespread than ever before. The affordability crisis, which has been displacing countless families and communities, is every bit as much a consequence of stagnant and declining incomes as it is of rising rents. Since 2008, we, as a city, have lost over 100,000 middle-class jobs. Not only do we have fewer and fewer jobs, but the jobs that we do have are paying lower and lower wages in a relentless race to the bottom. Those of us committed to a vision of broadly shared prosperity cannot afford to stand by passively, while the tidal wave of hotel-to condo conversions threatens the extinction of an entire sector of middle-class employment. Intro 1586, which would extend the moratorium on hotel condo conversions, is the right course of action in our present moment as we, as a city, seek to study the complex market forces reshaping the hotel industry in the hopes of developing a longer-term framework for carefully regulating those forces in keeping with the city's best traditions of upward mobility and world-class hospitality. Even though we are only local legislators, we are not powerless to preserve what remains of the middle class. We can do more, and for the future of our city, we must. New York City's economy thrives most when it thrives on broad-based prosperity. Our government thrives when there is a broad base of middle-class taxpayers. Our businesses thrive when there is a broad base of middle-class consumers. New York City as a tourist destination thrives when there is a world-class hotel industry sustained by a broad-based middle-class workforce. The road to the American dream, quite simply, runs through the middle class. It runs through the upscale and luxury sectors of the hotel industry, which is one of the few, if not the only, industry where a poor immigrant with less than a high school diploma can earn enough income to build a decidedly middle-class life in the most expensive city in the world. There is a word for this, the American dream. And intro 1586 represents one of our very best attempts at preserving it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, councilmember. My understanding is that there's a couple of council colleagues that may have to go off to the bill signing that happens to be happening during our stated. So, I'm not sure how that happened. So, I don't know those councilmembers that would like to vote ahead. Please raise your hands.
So, can we do a vote at this point in time? Councilmember Carnegie?
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate. I'd like to vote on all items on the general order calendar.
Thank you. Please raise your hand. Councilmember Borelli?
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate. I'd like to vote aye on all call-ups and general order calendars.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Deusch?
I'd like to vote on all the general order and the call-ups. Give it down, please. Give it down. It's outside.
Councilmember Kalos?
Aye. We'd like to vote aye on all general orders and call-ups, and with that, we say. Aye.
Councilmember Kalos, you have to verbalize the word aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers would like to vote now and then? Trager. Councilmember Trager?
Madam Public Advocate, I'd like to vote on all coupled general order items.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vote aye.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. He was scratching his head. Anyone else? Let us continue.
Hold on one second, please. All right. We'll keep going. Introduction 1218A, sponsored by Councilmember Vincent Gentili, by request of the Brooklyn Borough President. Guys, please, let's maintain order. Introduction 1218A, sponsored by Councilmember Vincent Gentili, by request of the Brooklyn Borough President, would increase the penalties for illegally converting residential space to contain three or more dwelling units above the amount legally allowed. And introduction 823A, sponsored by Councilmember Idanis Rodriguez, would require the Department of Buildings to submit an annual report to the city council on the rate of illegal conversions of dwelling units for a purpose other than permanent residence. Staff, I want to thank Megan Chen, Guillermo Patino, Jose Conde, Sarah Gastelum, Jen Wilcox, and Ed Atkins, and ask for Councilmembers Gentili and then Rodriguez to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Over two years ago, I stood with Brooklyn Borough President Eric Adams and our colleague, City Councilmember Jomani Williams, on Flatbush Avenue by the ravaged remains of a building consumed by a fatal-to-alarm fire. The 23-year-old, a 23-year-old security guard was killed and 15 others were injured.
Excuse me, councilmember. May we have quiet in the chambers, please? Please. Councilmember Gentili has the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate. The cause of that fire? Illegal residential conversions. Partitioning one- and two-family homes with shoddy construction, faulty wiring, and compromised gas work has become a common practice by predatory landlords. Maximizing profit at the expense of the safety of inhabitants has led to today's proliferation of illegal home conversions. Intro 1218A, sponsored by myself, Brooklyn Borough President Adams, Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Gordenchik, and co-sponsored by 22 other members in this chamber, will make this unethical practice an unlawful one. We will codify a years-long rallying cry that has been echoed in these August chambers in hearings, in civic organization gatherings, and community board meetings across the city that substandard housing is not affordable housing. Focusing on the most egregious purveyors of illegal conversions, this bill establishes a $15,000 penalty strictly on the unscrupulous owner for each legally partitioned dwelling unit that is three or more units above the certificate of occupancy. To ensure remediation and payment of the violation, the fine constitutes will constitute a lien on the property, so if unpaid for one year, the lien can be sold by the city. Now, let me be clear. While penalizing aggravated illegal conversions, that is, three or more above the certificate of occupancy, will not impede the efforts to legalize and standardize basement apartments. It will root out profiteering landlords who gut and partition entire buildings for maximum profit with no concern for tenant's safety. In addition, 1218A will equip the Department of Buildings with the tools necessary to obtain an access warrant where it has been unable to gain access to a building where it suspects an aggravated illegal conversion has occurred. All in all, this bill will serve as strong deterrent on the front end, and if needed, strong enforcement tools on the back end to combat aggravated illegal conversions. I would like to thank the Speaker for her leadership and all my colleagues who have signed on to this landmark legislation. On the staff side, I'd like to thank Laura Popa, Ed Atkins, Jen Wilcox, Megan Chen, Guillermo Patina from the Speaker's office, and our former colleague Lou Fidler, who now works at the Brooklyn Borough President's office, who's worked for decades on legislation of this type, and Andrew Gennardis, also from Brooklyn BP's office. And also, a big thank you and shout-out to Jonathan Shabshahiz, my legislative director, who did yeoman's work on this legislation to get it to the floor today. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker, for your support in this legislation and many other good bills that we have passed. I want to thank my colleagues as well, including my housing and building chair, Jomani Williams, and Mayor de Blasio, for their support of this legislation as well. Illegal hotel conversion are when residents or landlords decide that instead of living in these apartments or allowing tenants to rent their lease, they instead turn them into short-term illegal hotels. That's unacceptable in New York City. We have seen this happen in many neighborhoods with rapidly rising rents, compounding the issue of displacement and lowering the number of available affordable housing units in our city. This legislation will require HPD to track where these violations are occurring, keeping a public record of what buildings have had complaints and where these complaints are in the adjumptions process. This is important information as we work to battle back against the proliferation of illegal hotels in our city that deplete our vital stocks of affordable housing. This is about maintaining an affordable city and going after bad actors. Lastly, I want to thank the staff that work on this legislation, including Megan Chen, Guillermo Patinos, Ed Atkins, Jen Wilcox, Ma Geold, Laura Popa, and Ron Newman, as well as my staff, Jose Luis and Rosa Murphy. Thank you.
Gracias. We will also hear again from Councilmember Idanis Rodriguez, as he is prime sponsor of introduction 1285A, which would require the Department of Transportation to prepare a report by June 1st, 2018 relating to pedestrian activity in six locations with significant safety and traffic flow concerns. I want to thank staff, Kelly Taylor, Fiza Malik, Gafar Zaloff, Jonathan Masurano, Emily Rooney, Tersa Nasser, Asha Schomburg, Chima Obacher, and Brandon West. Councilmember?
Thank you, Speaker, for supporting this pack legislation, including the one that I lead and the others that I've been co-leading, together with Councilmember Ben Bremer and Councilmember Rosenthal. New Yorkers are all too familiar with crowded sidewalks. Most can point you to locations across our city where there are so packed people, often are left to walk in the street, dangerously occupying the same space as cars. Intro 1285A will require the DOT to look at some of these congested corridors and develop strategies to ease the flow of pedestrians in these areas. One thing we learned is that a more walkable city yields a healthier city. Moving about actively and ensuring ample space for pedestrians make New York City a more attractive place to live and work. In a city as dense as ours, we need to create the condition that is the flow of people in this legislation and to do just that. Again, I want to thank Ma, Ron Newman, Laura, Tersa Nasser, our committee staff, former Council Kelly Taylor, Council Fiza Malik, Police Analyst Jonathan Masurano, Gafar Zaloff, Emily Rooney, as my chief staff, Jose Luis, and my deputy chief staff, Rosa Murphy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Following up on pedestrian studies, introduction 1177A, sponsored by Councilmember Helen Rosenthal, would direct so following up on pedestrian studies, introduction 1177A, sponsored by Councilmember Helen Rosenthal, would direct the Department of Transportation to prepare a report by August 1st, 2017 regarding the feasibility of implementing Barnes Dance pedestrian interval crossing systems at high-crash intersections. Again, Kelly Taylor, Fiza Malik, Gafar Zaloff, Jonathan Masurano, Emily Rooney, Tersa Nasser, Asha Schomburg, Chima Obacher, and Brandon West. Thank you for that. And Councilmember Rosenthal will speak about her bill.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Councilmember Rosenthal? I'm sorry, that's right. Councilmember Rosenthal went off to the bill signing. Commercial bicyclists operating on behalf of a business or intermediary organization are subject to a number of safety and record-keeping requirements. These laws currently only apply to commercial bicyclists classified as employees. Intro 1117A sponsored by Majority Leader Jimmy Van Bremmer would amend these laws to include commercial bicyclists who are classified as independent contractors. Same set of staff, we thank them once again. Kelly Taylor, Fiza Malik, Gafar Zaloff, Jonathan Masurano, Emily Rooney, Tersa Nazar, Aisha Schomburg, Chima Obuchir, and Brandon West. Transportation Committee has been very busy. Majority Leader, if you want to speak to your bill?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. It was five years ago, in 2012, when we passed Local Law 52, a bill that I sponsored that required bicycle-delivery men and women to wear reflective vests, helmets, and to receive safety training from the Department of Transportation, as well as some identification on the back of those reflective vests indicating where those cyclists were delivering for. But with the advent of Uber Eats, Amazon Seamless, and others who code their cyclist's delivery men and women as independent contractors, there became a loophole in this important law, which keeps bicycle-delivery men and women safe and visible, particularly all those who are delivering your dinners at night in the dark, sometimes in rainy conditions when it's hard to see the bicyclist. So, this law, just like Local Law 52 of 2012, makes the cyclists who are delivering meals and other goods safer. It makes pedestrians safer. Everyone's more visible, and it contributes to reducing crashes and is part of our overall Vision Zero movement. So, I want to thank all of the councilmembers who co-sponsored it, our Chair and the Speaker for allowing us to continue the work of making sure that everyone who is working hard and delivering goods and services and food via bicycles is safe, including those who are delivering for Uber Eats, Amazon Seamless, and others who are registered as independent contractors. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Jimmy. Next, the council will be voting on Intro 518A sponsored by Councilmember Donovan Richards, which seeks to ensure that consumers are aware of any recalls associated with a used car by requiring second-hand automobile dealers to disclose recall information related to automobiles, parts, or equipment to purchasing consumers. I want to thank staff, Balkis, Mayor Reg, Israel Martinez, and Rachel Cordero for working on these bills, and Councilmember Richards will say a few words.
Thank you, Speaker. I'm proud to stand here today to ensure that second-hand car dealers are honest with their customers when selling a vehicle that has had a recall issue. We've all heard stories about people who have the misfortune of buying a lemon or something we know as a hoop-dee in my neighborhood. Buying a vehicle can be a very exciting time for someone, but nothing can crush that excitement like having that vehicle break down due to a serious flaw that could have been fixed. We are here today to provide protection for consumers looking to buy a used vehicle. With the passage of Intro 518A, a second-hand automobile dealer will be required to disclose recall information to consumers when selling automobile parts or equipment. This disclosure must be signed by the purchaser and retained by the dealer for five years. This bill would impose a $1,000 fine for a first offense, a $1,000 fine or imprisonment for a second offense, and suspension or revocation of a dealer's license at the discretion of the Commissioner for any additional offenses during a three-year period. Once again, this council is standing up for those who have been taken advantage of. Today, this legislation will ensure that we hold dealers accountable when they withhold vital information that could affect a consumer's decision, but most importantly, put their lives and the public's life in danger. I'd like to thank our Speaker, DCA Commissioner Salas, Chair Espinol, the Consumer Affairs Committee staff, Balkis Maharing, and Israel Martinez, and my legislative director, Jordan Gibbons, for making this legislation possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Strong stormwater management practices are required to reduce the flow of pollutants into New York City waterways. Introduction 1346A sponsored by Environmental Protection Committee Chair Costa Constantinitis would provide the New York City Department of Environmental Protection with the authority to implement and enforce stormwater management practices that are needed to comply with the state-issued municipal separate storm sewer system permit. Costa Constantinitis, lead sponsor, if you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I asked my colleagues today to support Intro 1346, which would grant the City Department of Environmental Protection the authority to better regulate the outflows from municipal separate stormwater sewers, or MS4s. Most of our sewage is transferred from wastewater treatment plants located throughout our city. However, when it rains, some of the sewage is carried from our streets into our waterways after being treated and disinfected. Intro 1346 ensures that our city oversees and enforces any activities that have the potential to contribute pollution into our waterways from the separate sewer system. It provides our city with the legal authority to implement a stormwater management program to meet the new requirements of the municipal separate stormwater sewer system's permit. The program will reduce pollution into stormwater that reaches our waterways. It will find and control litter and other sources of pollution from entering our waterways through the separate sewer system. The program includes stormwater runoff from commercial and industrial activities, runoff from active construction sites and newly-developed sites, as well as detection and elimination of illicit discharge. DEP will coordinate inter-agency efforts to meet the requirements of the MS4 permit. I'm especially proud that this bill requires that city agencies consider the feasibility of adding green infrastructure, such as permeable pavements, to any major capital project that is being built. Protecting our waterways from unnecessary environmental hazards will bring benefits to marine life, our city's ecosystem, and our entire environment. Being that we are a city surrounded by water, protecting our waterways is a huge priority. I want to thank our Speaker, Melissa Mark-Viverito, our mayor, our my council colleagues for their support, also our council staff, Samara Swanson, Bill Murray, Ed Atkins, Jonathan Seltzer, who also worked on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Costa. And then finally, the council will be voting up on initiatives first announced in my 2017 State of the City address. Intro 1028B sponsored by Councilmember Lori Combo would create a sexual health education task force comprised of a minimum of nine members, including experts in sexual health education, high school students, Department of Education staff, and at least one specialist in the field of LGBTQ and TGNC health education. The task force would review information about the current recommended sexual health curriculum and the implementation of sexual health education in DOE schools, and submit a report of their findings to the mayor and the council by December 1st of this year. Comprehensive sexual health education for students of all ages is imperative to raising healthy and informed adults. This City Council remains committed to providing our students with an extensive and age-appropriate education that remains inclusive of their needs, and I believe that this bill will go far in tailoring city sexual health education to the lives of our students live today. I want to thank Amita Kilowon, Smita Deshmuk, Aisha Schomburg, and Tersa Nazar, and I thank Councilmember Lori Combo for her work on this essential initiative, and ask her to give brief remarks on this positive step forward for our city's youth.
Thank you, Speaker, Melissa Mark-Viverito, and thank you so much for your leadership and working collaboratively on this very important piece of legislation. Across the city of New York, youth ages 12 and under are making mature, life-changing decisions about relationships and their sexuality based on peer pressure and misinformation from mass media. If we think about all of the images that young people see in music videos, film, television, everything that's accessible right at their fingertips on their telephones, it's important that we give them all of the information to be able to make the healthiest decisions on behalf of their lives. We can't allow young people to continue to make adult decisions in their childhood years. One-third of New York City high school students have not had or are unsure if they received sex education. Of those who recalled sex education, only 32% had one or more lessons. As the prime sponsor of Intro 1028B, I am proud that this bill will bring us one step closer to charting a new course for youth of all ages and backgrounds, to engage in meaningful conversations about healthy relationships, consensual sex, pregnancy, sexually transmitted diseases, and sexual abuse. This task force, comprised of individuals that represent a spectrum of beliefs and backgrounds, ages, various career level, and life experiences, has the opportunity to infuse new ideas and voices to create an educational tool that celebrates the diversity of New Yorkers, particularly those who identify as LGBTQIA, and live and thrive here. Sexuality is so much more than sexual intercourse. It is about developing a healthy self-relationship, a self-image, your identity, gender role, and learning how to express yourself as well as your boundaries. And I want to say that this is so important at this particular time because sex education should no longer be considered a taboo topic. It shouldn't be something that we should shy away from or something that we feel is too uncomfortable in order to educate our young people. Again, they are making adult decisions, and as the famous group said, "A woman dynamic team, salt and pepper, let's talk about sex, baby." Thank you.
Okay.
Now is the time for all members to turn to their interns and explain.
All right. Thank you, Lori, for that impassioned speech. So, before we conclude, those of you who have an RSVP yet, we invite you to join us next Monday, the 15th, as we commemorate the 72nd anniversary of the Allied Victory in Europe with a gathering here in the council chambers. And with that, I end communication with the Speaker.
Thank you. Now for our early vote. Councilmember Williams for a vote?
I vote aye on all with the exception of 589, 590, and related results. I vote no on those.
Report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Consumer Affairs, Intro 518A, second-hand automobile dealers.
Amended and coupled on general orders?
Report of the Committee on Education, Intro 1028B, Sexual Health Education Task Force.
Amended and coupled on general orders?
Report of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Intro 1346A, Water Pollution Control.
Amended and coupled on general orders?
Report of the Committee on Finance, Preconsidered LU 625 and Reso 1464, and LU 626 and Reso 1465 tax exemptions.
Coupled on general orders?
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro 823A, Legal Conversions of Dwelling Units.
Amended and coupled on general orders?
Intro 1218A, Legal Conversions.
Amended and coupled on general orders?
Intro 1586, Hotel Preservation.
Coupled on general orders?
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 602 and Reso 1466, and LU 603 and Reso 1467 Landmark Designations.
Coupled on general orders?
LU 612 and 613, Zoning Amendments.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Rules 11.70B of the Rules of the Council and Section 197D of the New York City Charter.
Excuse me. LU 618 and Reso 1468, Tax Exemption.
Coupled on general orders?
LU 620 and Reso 1469 through LU 624 and Reso 1473 on Page 7, UDAP Queens.
Coupled on general orders?
Preconsidered LU 630 and Reso 1474, Waldorf Astoria.
Coupled on general orders?
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, M494 and Reso 1475, approving the reappointment of Carlos Silvestri Tax Commission.
Coupled on general orders?
M495 and Reso 1476, approving the reappointment of Deborah Scotto, Environmental Control Board.
Coupled on general orders?
M496 and Reso 1477, approving the reappointment of Joseph Duac Planning Commission.
Coupled on general orders?
Preconsidered M512 and Reso 1478, approving the redesignation of Robert Nolan Health and Hospitals Corporation.
Coupled on general orders?
Report of the Committee on Transportation, Intro 1117A, Using a Bicycle for Commercial Purposes.
Amended and coupled on general orders?
Intro 1177A, Pedestrian Crossings.
Amended and coupled on general orders?
Intro 1285A, Pedestrian Traffic Study.
Amended and coupled on general orders?
On the General Order Calendar, LU 589 and Reso 1479, and LU 590 and Reso 1480, Zoning Amendments.
Coupled on general orders?
Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders, and I ask for a roll call vote on all items coupled on General Order Calendar.
May we have quiet in the chambers for a vote, please? Shh.
Barren.
Thank you.
I vote aye on all with the exception of 589 and 590 and the accompanying resolutions.
Thank you.
Chin.
Aye on all.
Cohen.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
Constantinitis.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
Crowley.
I vote aye.
Combo.
I vote aye.
Espinol.
Aye.
Thank you.
Eugene.
Aye.
Grodnik.
No on 1586. Aye on the rest.
Thank you.
Gentili.
Aye on all.
Gibson.
Councilmember Gibson?
She stepped out?
Greenfield.
Councilmember Greenfield?
Madam Public Advocate, may I have permission to please kindly explain my vote?
Yes, Councilmember Greenfield.
Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to recognize that I've been joined today by two outstanding young students, Victoria Wyndham from Hawthorne, New York, who has taught me a lot, including the fact that apparently it's very cold here in the council chamber. So, thank you for letting me know. She says that I wear a jacket, so I'm not cold. So, I've learned something new here today. And I also would like to welcome Abby Greenfield, who is a young student who happens to be my niece, who is joining us here today as well. So, thank you very much, Abby, for joining us. I also want to congratulate Joe Duac.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you very much. I was explaining to them how we all fear the public advocate's wrath, so we try to make sure that we are within our three-minute limit, and I have 1 minute and 14 seconds left. I do also want to congratulate Joe Duac on his reappointment to the Department of City Planning as an appointee of the Brooklyn Borough President. He is exceptionally qualified for that, and we have had a pleasure working with him, and I want to congratulate him as well. That's Eric Adams is the Brooklyn Borough President. That was the question. And then also want to congratulate Deborah Scotto on the Environmental Control Board. I will also vote aye on all with the exception of Intro 1586, on which I am voting no. And I thank you, Madam Public Advocate, for your indulgence, and perhaps whoever's in charge of the temperature can raise it a couple of degrees so that Victoria here doesn't have to freeze for the remainder of our stated meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, ladies. Welcome.
Rodriguez.
Aye, and with permission, would like to vote aye on all general order.
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you.
Gibson.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you.
Gredchenk.
Permission to explain my vote, Madam Public Advocate?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate my colleague Vince Gentili on shepherding this legislation through the council, through the administration, that will finally give some teeth to illegal conversion, the fight against illegal conversions in this city. It is a problem. It's unhealthy. It overcrowds our schools. It's unhealthy for the people living in what can be rightfully described at times as hellholes. And so, I was glad to add my voice to that. I want to congratulate everybody who's passing legislation today. Also, I want to thank the Chair of Housing and Buildings, one of my committees, for his work on that bill as well. Thank the Speaker. Thank you for sitting up there so nicely and admonishing us. And my niece is not here today. She's in Austria with her parents, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you.
Johnson.
Aye on all.
Thank you.
Koo.
Aye on all.
Thank you.
Lander.
Request permission to explain my vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First, I want to shower praise on my colleague, Councilmember Levin, both for making this day in the council such a meaningful one for several years running now, and for really calling our attention to foster care issues. I really appreciate it. I also want to praise him for his work to deepen the affordability at Rose Castle, which I think he did with a lot of integrity and a strong effort. That said, I am going to be voting no on land use 589 and 590 and the accompanying resolutions, not because of the specifics of this deal, but because when we adopted mandatory inclusionary housing, I made clear at the time that I thought there should not be that option three, which to me is just not affordable housing in New York City. And I plan to vote no on option three MIH applications in this chamber. So, with that, I vote aye on all with the exception of those.
Thank you.
Levin.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate. I just want to thank and acknowledge all of the youth participating in the Foster Youth Shadow Day that are here. It's a wonderful opportunity, not only for you, while it is a nice, wonderful opportunity for you, it's also a wonderful opportunity for us to hear from you, what are the important issues that you are facing as youth that are in care or have aged out of care, and so we welcome you. And in particular, I want to welcome... And so we welcome you, and in particular, I want to welcome the young person who is shadowing me today, Malaya DeCambrera, who is a sophomore right now in high school and is an amazing young woman. I also want to recognize Michael Tessier, who is with me as well, who's a senior. And I want to thank both of them for their insight and for being with us today, and we hope that this is a wonderful experience for them. And with that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you, Councilmember. She's going to Spelman, and he's going to college. Yes.
Mealy.
I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Menchaca.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
I also want to welcome all the young people in the House and commend Councilmember Levin for his continued support, not just for the foster care system, but really for all young people. This is a council that welcomes young people in so many different ways, and I hope that you are welcomed, not only in a way that you are now as visitors by our side, but hopefully one day coming in and representing your voice here in the City Council. The chairs that you sit in today are going to be warmed by your presence, and they will be welcoming you back hopefully one day as new council members to vote on legislation that impacts us all. So I hope you feel that welcome. I want to thank also Councilmember Torres for taking lead on 1586, the workers that he spoke to and the middle class, and the kind of commitment that we need to give them against these illegal conversions. And these conversions, I should say, are exactly what this council needs to do. All the transportation bills, thank you so much for Chair Rodriguez for pushing those through. I was sponsors of all three of those pieces of legislation, making our streets even safer. And then again, to Councilmember Combo and the Speaker for really pushing the sexual assault initiative and legislation. These are things that are going to change the lives of so many people in our community. I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mendez.
Aye on all. Thank you.
Miller.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
I want to just congratulate my colleagues, Gentili in particular, on the illegal conversion. Certainly that this has had an impact on many communities throughout the city, particularly in southeast Queens, and it's something that we have discussed and worked on behalf for a number of years now. And certainly, this will put some tools in the toolbox that will give residents relief and safety. We've witnessed a number of events and tragedies because of this, and we hopefully that this will be helpful in resolving those issues that will move forward in the future. With that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you.
Palma.
Thank you.
Perkins.
I want to join in voting aye on all and welcoming our future leaders who are amongst us today and hopefully will be presiding over our city in a similar capacity in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reynoso.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
Richards.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
First off, I want to thank Councilmember Steve Levin once again for holding the Shadow Day. I'd like to welcome my guide today, Manny Williams, my Foster Shadow student for the day. Despite some turmoil in his life that led him to the foster care system, he battled through to achieve his high school diploma. But his story also shows the need for additional assistance once foster children age out of the system. Manny graduated from Eagle Academy in Brooklyn and is looking forward to heading to Johnson's in Wales University in Providence, where he'll study to be a chef. And he loves to cook West Indian food, so I'm trying to bring him home with me, actually, tonight to have some good oxtails and rice and peas. So I just wanted to welcome him and congratulate him on his future success and endeavors.
Congratulations.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, young man.
Rose.
Aye.
Torres.
Permission to say a few comments?
Yes.
First, I want to thank Councilmember Menchaca. I neglected to mention he was an indispensable partner in the passage of the moratorium on the hotel-to-conversion bill. And I want to thank my Shadow Councilmember for the day, Honorary Councilmember Thomas. So thankfully, for the first time in my term, I'm no longer the youngest member, so I'm happy to be displaced.
Ulrich.
I vote aye on all, and I ask for permission to vote on all land use items?
Yes.
I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Valone.
Aye on all with the exception of 1586, which I vote no.
Thank you.
Wills.
I vote aye on all, including land use items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mario.
I vote no on 1586 and aye on the rest, with permission to vote yes on all land use call-ups.
Yes. Thank you.
Van Bramer.
I vote aye on all, and I do want to recognize my staff for their work on passing Intro 1117, Matt Wallace, our Chief of Staff, and Andres Vija, our Deputy Chief of Staff, in addition to all of the central staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Speaker Mark Viverito.
I vote aye.
As we wait for the results, I hope everyone got City State. Oh, by the way, I'm on the cover. Just, you know, just make sure you get your copy right here. Oh, she looks lovely. All items on today's general order calendar were adopted by [inaudible 0:48:11] a vote of 49 in the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of land use 589 and Resolution 1479, which was adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, three negative, and zero abstentions, and land use 590 and Resolution 1480, which was adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, three negative, and zero abstentions, and Intro 1586, which was adopted by a vote of 45 in the affirmative, four negative, and zero abstentions, and the revised land use call-ups are 49 in the affirmative and zero negative. Introduction and reading of bills.
All bills are referred to committees as indicated on the agenda.
Thank you. And now we go to the Resolution, Resolution 1374, discussion of the resolution, and the resolution reads as follows. An amended resolution establishing June [inaudible 0:48:18]. Quiet in the chambers, please. Establishing June 8th annually as Teen Mental Health Awareness Day in the City of New York. Would anyone like to speak on the resolution? Seeing none. All of those in favor say aye. All of those opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. And preconsidered Resolution 1463, which reads as follows. A resolution calling upon the Secretary of the Department of Homeland Security to redesignate and extend temporary protected status for Guinea, Liberia, and Sierra Leone as these countries have not recovered from the Ebola epidemic, and it would be unsafe for nationals currently present in the United States to return home at this time. Anyone speaking on the resolution? Councilmember Rose.
Aye. Thank you. I rise today to ask for my colleague's support on an urgent matter, preconsidered Resolution 1463. On May 21st of this year, more than 5,000 people in this country are in danger of being plucked from their communities and deported and sent to war-torn, Ebola-ravaged countries, and they need our help. Temporary protected status, or TPS, for people from Guinea, Liberia, and Sierra Leone is scheduled to end, and I am asking you to support an emergency resolution calling on the Secretary of Homeland Security to reauthorize and to extend temporary protected status for these countries. Of all the statistics I have read in recent months while working with my colleagues, my constituents, on this issue, two have really struck me. First, Ebola left 17,300 children without one or both parents. And second, before the Ebola outbreak killed thousands, these countries had a ratio of one to two physicians per 100,000 people. Imagine if each of us only had three physicians in our districts. At the same time, these countries are suffering from a rise in non-Ebola illnesses and deaths, resulting in 10,600 additional deaths due to untreated conditions in Guinea, Sierra Leone, and Liberia, while their infrastructures and economies were decimated. If no action is taken, thousands will be sent to countries with no jobs, no infrastructure, no healthcare facilities, or they will be relegated to the shadows here, unable to provide for their families for fear of deportation. I want to thank the Speaker for joining me in sponsoring this resolution, my colleague's Councilmember Menchaca for sponsoring this legislation, as well as holding an emergency immigration hearing today. And I want to thank Councilmember Danny Drum for chairing and the staff of the Integration Committee. I also want to thank Congressman Donald Payne, okay, for championing this issue in the United States. And I just want to say that there is also, this is an issue also relevant for Haitians. Their date for deportation is in August, so we will revisit that in the coming months.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay. All of those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. All of those opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. And now turning to general discussion, beginning with Councilmember Inez Barron. Quiet in the chambers, please. We're still in session.
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate. I also want to commend my colleague, Councilmember Levin, for sponsoring the young people who are here today, and I want to make sure that they all know that as a foster child, you are entitled to apply to CUNY's Aging Out Program, where you will be able to attend a CUNY institution, if that's your pleasure, free of charge. There are, this year, 40 slots presently existing, and it's going to be increased to 80. So they will provide your free scholarship to a CUNY institution, they will provide housing, and they will assist with other costs, and they will also give you a MetroCard. So we're pleased to announce that. Please look into that if you're interested. Secondly, I want to talk about the Excelsior Scholarship. I think it was in February that Governor Cuomo said he had a plan for free tuition, and it became the Excelsior Scholarship. I have a very serious critique of the Excelsior Scholarship. The Excelsior Scholarship is a last-dollar-in program. What that means is that low-income students have to first use all of their TAP and PEL, and then if they have any additional need, they can apply for that difference to be paid by the Excelsior Scholarship. The problem is, students attending SUNY and CUNY have additional costs which can be twice as much as tuition. So for housing, meals, and utilities, CUNY has estimated that it's $4,210. For books and supplies, it's $1,364. For transportation, it's $1,054. For personal expenses, it is $1,816. That means if you're a CUNY student staying at home, you will spend as much as $9,592. The governor's program should have been a first-dollar-in program. That means this ability to apply for a scholarship would apply to everybody without asking them to use their TAP and their PEL. So what the governor has done with this Excelsior program is in fact increased that income gap between the low income and the high income, because those who are in the higher income, Madam Public Advocate, will be able to use that scholarship money for their tuition, and then they have that extra cash that they need for those additional costs, whereas low-income students do not. So I'm calling the governor out on that. I think that he should have used first-dollar-in, everybody apply, and then low-income students would have the ability to apply as well. And finally, I think that Medgar Evers College will not have the most appropriate commencement speaker. I don't think that that college, that is a predominantly black college, should have a person who thinks that blacks are super predators and whose history of work in Haiti is questionable, should have that person as their commencement speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Again, for all those students who are aging out of foster care, again, please heed the advice of Councilmember Barron. CUNY is free for individuals who are aging out of foster care with free housing. Next, we're calling upon Councilmember Chin. Councilmember Kalos.
Today, I rise with my Foster Youth Councilmember, Shadi Henderson, to introduce Introduction 1594, because long lines, hold music, and bureaucratic forms, there could be an app for that. Today, we're introducing, again, Intro 1594, to provide an interface for digital requests and submissions for all government information. Legislation requires all information received or transmitted by city government to be available through an application program interface. We need to build an API for government so that my talking points can go dark on my laptop. And so the great thing about technology is when it works, it works well. And so an API provides a set of definitions, protocols, and tools for building application software, or in English, it provides a translation dictionary for different software to communicate and makes it easier for developers to program new applications. New Yorkers should be able to use government services as simply as new apps deliver food or cars when you need one. Anytime a paper form, an operator, or website requests information like a name, email, income, or other details, that information could just as easily be provided by an app through an API. Similarly, anytime the city shares information on whether you qualify for public benefits or register to vote or taxes, you could just as easily provide that to an app through an API. I encourage my colleagues to sign on, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Combo.
Thank you, Public Advocate. I want to start off by recognizing that this Friday will mark the two-year anniversary of the fatal Amtrak train derailment in Pennsylvania, and it claimed one of the lives of the 35th Council District, Brooklyn's own Dr. Dean Derek Griffith. Dr. Derek Griffith was a dean at Medgar Evers College in Crown Heights and was a few days away from graduating with his Doctor of Philosophy degree. I, in partnership with the college, will commemorate his legacy with a street co-naming ceremony at the intersection of Montgomery and Bedford Avenue. Please join us in remembrance of this unwavering commitment and dedication to the educational advancement of our youth. I'm also so proud today to be joined by two dynamic women who have continued to be advocates and champions for the youth that are aging out of our foster care. They have done incredible work, particularly Brianna Hayes, who's 23 years old, who is a fantastic advocate at Uganda Believes Older Teen Adoption Agency, has done incredible work to pass legislation here at the city council at the young age of 23. She's going to go off to be a culinary artist and hopefully sitting in the seats here at city council one day as well. Lauren Moody, to my left, is 19 years old. She is graduating from Mount Pleasant Cottage School, and she is a dynamic young woman who is interested in a career in nursing or law, and she's debating between those two very incredible careers. They too have attended Speaker Melissa Mark-Viverito's press conference today and have felt very confident that they could stand in those shoes, and I hope to see them here in the city council chambers even more. Thank you. I'm so happy to have you both here today. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, young ladies. Councilmember Richards.
Thank you, Madam Public Speaker. I'd like to call my colleagues' attention to our bill on the right to disconnect, which we are introducing with Councilmembers Espinal and Baca today. Intro 1605 will require all city agencies to generate a policy regarding work-related communications during non-work hours. The use of work-related communications during non-work hours has become very common. Indeed, a recent survey conducted by Pew Research shows that 35% of workers think digital tools have increased the amount of hours they work. Yet, the in-office working time of an employee in the U.S. is already far above the average of other developed countries. Rest time is of paramount importance for both health and productivity. In fact, 64% of North American employees report having high levels of stress. Some of them even talk about a stress feeling out of control related to work. Those kinds of symptoms can lead to so-called burnouts. I'm sure many of us feel that sometimes. A severe medical condition defined as a state of exhaustion of physical or emotional strength or motivation. It could also have a real negative impact on the quality of work produced. 16% of employees miss more than seven days of work per year due to stress and anxiety, and according to a new study, employees who check their professional emails and texts after 9:00 p.m. are less productive than those who don't. For all those reasons, all these reasons, it is necessary that every city agency defines a human resources policy for its employees, adapted to the requirements of each profession, aiming to limit the use of work forms and emails during non-work hours. Please join me in supporting this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Steve Levin.
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate. I do want to take this opportunity to thank and acknowledge my legislative director, Julie Bureau, who has been with the Council 33rd District Office since last year. She's done a stellar job as the legislative director, shepherding the Foster Youth Shadow legislation, or the Foster Youth Package legislation from last year, as well as working on Intro 495, the Waste Equity Bill.
495, the Waste Equity Bill, and a number of other great pieces of legislation, in addition to working very closely with the General Welfare Committee staff on all the issues that we are facing in the General Welfare Committee. Julie has done such a fantastic job that the Mayor's Office of Legislative Affairs has seen fit to take her on, working with the council on a number of legislative committees. And so we are really going to miss her greatly and the great work that she did here at the council, but we are going to look forward to working with her as part of the mayor's staff. So Julie, thank you so much for all that you've done with this council. Thanks so much.
Congratulations. Councilmember Mendez.
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate. My colleagues, today, I and my brothers, who comprise the LGBT Caucus, are introducing Intro 1604. Intro 1604 would require all city agencies to have a check-off box on their city forms, where people can identify what gender pronouns they prefer to be addressed by. These will be on all city forms that do not have any federal oversight or federal reporting. And I think in this city, where, particularly in this country, where transgender individuals have been under attack, and in this city where we have stood up for the rights of transgender individuals, that this is the least we can start doing, is to make our forms have that check-off box, so that no longer would an employee have to ask, what is your gender pronoun, nor would an individual have to correct someone who's using the improper gender pronouns. So my colleagues, I hope you sign on to Intro 1604.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Menchaca.
Thank you. So I rise to also join Councilmember Mendez and the LGBT Caucus on the proposed bill 1604, which would require the Mayor's Office of Operations to ensure that city agencies provide mandatory training to the frontline staff members regarding the use of cities' city residents' gender pronouns when interacting with such residents. The bill would also require agencies to amend their demographic forms to allow city residents, you just heard from Councilmember Mendez, to indicate their gender pronouns on such forms, and to the extent that the city agency is not authorized to amend such a form, to provide a separate form to collect such information. The bill will also require city agencies to update databases and computer systems such that gender pronoun information may be retained with the resident's individual file. Addressing a person with the correct gender pronoun is one of the most basic ways to show respect for their identity. Referring to someone with the wrong pronoun can make them feel disrespected, alienated, and dysphoric. City employees and data systems don't always know someone's correct gender pronoun by their name, appearance, or a voice on the phone. With training and data guidelines, city agencies can help all residents feel respected for who they are and how they identify. I ask my colleagues to fully support both Reso 1463 and Intro 1604 today. Both items exhibit our shared vision of a city that welcomes immigrants who merit temporary protected status. We talked about that. But I just want to finally say thank you to a member of my staff, Brian Alacot, who continues, in his own way, continues to advocate, and we lift all voices today with this. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Councilmember Ku.
Thank you, Madam Advocate. This year, we recognize the 135th anniversary of the Chinese Exclusion Act, which today remains a scar on our country's history of liberty and justice for all. We must recognize the generational harm caused by such racially discrimination, and remember to always honor the contributions of all immigrants who are so essential to the foundation, construction, and future of this country. Chinese Americans helped to build the United States, just as the Italian Americans, Irish Americans, German Americans, Latino Americans, African Americans, Korean Americans. The list goes on and on. And as long as America continues to value the contributions of immigrants, regardless of race, color, or creed, we will remain the greatest country on Earth, a place of refuge for those in need of sanctuary, and the light of hope for all those who seek to better life for themselves and their families. The Chinese Exclusion Act was a shameful time of our country, and so we look back today and remember the difficult circumstances surrounding this era, and also to celebrate how far we have come as a nation and as a city that observes and celebrates all who call you home. Thank you to my colleagues who sponsored this resolution, Councilmember Chin and Councilmember Menchaca. Today, we are doing Resolution 1457, a resolution proclaiming May 6th, the 135th anniversary of this Chinese Exclusion Act, signed by President Chester Alda. So I hope all my colleagues can support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, for those most appropriate words during these very trying times. And now to close, our Speaker, Melissa Mark-Viverito.
Thanks, Madam Public Advocate. I love your cover, but I kind of like mine a little better. So, you know, throwdown here. City and state covers. Let's go. Trying to find mine. I gotta show you mine. So I don't think city and state ever projected that they'd be having encouraging throwdowns here. But thank you to all my colleagues. Thank you to all the wonderful students. Ashley, who's been here sitting with me, and she's going to become a social worker and give back to the community. So congratulations on that stuff. It means a lot. And to all of you, thank you again for being here with us today. And I know we stand in recess. It's budget time, in case we have to come back. So we stand in recess. Thank you.
Congratulations. We stand in recess.